And reconvene the Parker Town Council meeting for October 19th at 7:03 PM. All council members are present. Council and audience, if you would, please join me in honoring our nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Now, first up on our agenda, we do have a special presentation tonight for citizens offering Parker Police Support. Guys, would you mind coming down here and meeting me up front here for the Zoom meeting because the camera is right there? We're all going to be looking right into that computer right there. I know. So for those of you who are viewing from home, I'm here. The last time I've been surrounded by this many officers, I was like this and getting thrown on the back of a cruiser. Oh, yeah. Taking turns seeing how long a tater can go before it runs out of juice. Now, what we're here tonight too is I'm going to, we've got a certificate for one of the groups here in Parker that is really special and supportive of our police department. I'll read you guys a little bit about it for those at home. This is for citizens offering Parker Police Support or COPS. It's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization created and managed by graduates of the Parker Police Department Citizen Police Academy. Those watching at home, if you haven't participated in this academy, you definitely need to look into doing it. It's a great way to learn from these wonderful professionals about what happens in the Parker Police Department. They volunteer time to the department's programs and fundraise in support of the Parker Police Department's COPS, works closely with the department's leadership to support programs and initiatives that help keep officers and the community safe. The town would like to recognize the COPS program for their Thin Blue Line project. On October 5th, 2019, members of the COPS group painted a thin blue line on the lane in front of the Parker Police Department to create a visual reminder for officers of their appreciation and constant support of the work they do each and every day. And I think we've got a couple of members of COPS online. We've got, I believe it's Dale DeBerry and Charlene Glover. What we have here is a certificate. It says Certificate of Recognition Awarded to Citizens Offering Parker Police Support for Your Passion and Service to the Parker Police Department Demonstrated by the Thin Blue Line Project. So this is for you guys. You guys have anything you want to say from the COPS?
I just want to say on behalf of the men and women of the Parker Police Department, we want to thank you for all of your support over the years, and it's very much appreciated. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. Yes. Here, here. Yeah. So the couple of participants we have online, Danette, if they would like to say anything, could you unmute them?
Yes, Charlene, could you please unmute yours?
Yeah, thank you guys very much. We really appreciate that. And everyone in the town, Michelle and Dave in public works for a lot of help getting that project done.
Excellent. Thank you guys very much. And please pass on our thank you to the rest of the group as well.
Well, dear, thank you.
All right. Excellent. I'll give this to you. Wonderful. Well done, guys. We need the applause and audience tracks like they have at those stadiums. All right. Next item up on our agenda is our public comment section, our general public comment. If you have items to address for council that are not on our agenda, that's where the general public comment comes in, and you can submit those items online at parkeronline.org by 5:00 PM on the day of our council meetings, and then it would get distributed to the rest of council. And by the way, anyone who's watching at home, there's two ways to watch the meeting tonight. You could be watching it through Facebook Live. You could also be watching it through Zoom. If you're watching it through Facebook Live and you have a public comment on an item that is coming up, you won't be able to provide it through Facebook Live, so you'll have to go over to the Zoom meeting to do it. So make sure there is a link there that you can follow to get that set up if you wish to do that on any of the items. All right. Moving on, next item is item number five. This is our consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine. They'll be enacted with one motion and one vote unless a council member asks to have something removed and voted on. Items on the consent agenda that are ordinances will not be removed because those are there for introduction only. So council, you have in front of you consent agenda items 5A through 5G.
Yes, and I did request that we at least look at removing.
You could make a motion to do it. Make sure your microphone's on.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we remove item G from the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion from Cheryl and a second from Jeff to remove item G for the consent agenda. And as I remind her, we'll be doing everything by voice vote since we don't have our computer systems up. So Josh.
Aye.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Debbie.
No.
John.
Yeah.
Okay, motion passes three to two, so item G is off of the consent agenda and will be addressed separately. So council in front of you, you have consent agenda items 5A through 5F.
Would like to remove item F.
Okay. If you could make a motion in the microphone.
Make a motion that we remove item F from the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion from Cheryl and a second from Jeff. Josh.
Aye.
Cheryl.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Debbie.
No.
John.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes four to one with item F. Okay, you have before you consent agenda items 5A through 5E.
I move to approve consent agenda items 5A through 5E, please.
I'll second that.
Motion by Josh and a second by Cheryl. Josh.
Aye.
Cheryl.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Debbie.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. You have in front of you item 5F.
Okay. This is an item.
You can state it in your microphone so they can hear you at home.
This is an item that there was a lot of controversy on, and I feel that rather than putting it into a consent agenda where there's no public discussion on it, that the public needs to know what's going on. So I'm just asking for an explanation that we got that you can provide to our citizens with this particular item.
Okay. Bryce, if you could come on down, if you could state your name and what you do for the town. Can he borrow the microphone, or if you want to hand it over and behind you there? And Bryce, while you're there, if you'll address both items F and G, please. Yeah. Talk really loud. You don't have to get close, but you do have to talk loud.
It would actually help if it was on as well.
There you go. So state who you are and what you do for the town.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. My name's Bryce Matthews. I'm the planning manager for the town. Item F on the agenda is a request by the Back Forty Range app property owner applicant. They received a use by special review approval from town council on March 14th, 2019 for an indoor archery and gun range. The site is generally located over at Chambers Road and Heirloom Parkway area. Actually, it's Double Angel, Chambers and Double Angel. They got their approval April 1st, 2019 by town council. Approvals are last one year, 12 months. After 12 months, their applicants are allowed a 90-day extension administratively, submitted to the planning director. So they received that 90-day extension on March 16th. In addition to that, as you are aware, there was an emergency ordinance put in place that extended all approvals four months. So this application would expire on October 30th, 2020. The applicant has requested a waiver of the 12 months, extensively an extension of their approval through December 31st, 2021. So that's the first request. Item G, Front Range Advisors, is requesting an extension of a site plan. This site plan was for a two-story commercial office building located on Main Street next to the Culvers. The rules are the same. They have a one-year allowance to get a building permit. They got a 90-day extension, and they also took advantage of the four-month emergency order extension. And that means that their approval would expire October 20th, so tomorrow. They are also requesting an extension for, through December 31st, 2021. Both of the applicants are actually online if council has any questions for them as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Council, do you have any questions for either of the two applicants?
Mayor, I don't have a question for the applicants, but I do have a question for our legal counsel. Not having done this for very long, but am I correct in my recollection that if it's not on the consent agenda, it cannot be on the public agenda for everyone? It has to have a first reading to get to a second reading so that it can be notified and everyone can hear about it?
Those would be for ordinances. These two are resolutions.
This is just a resolution.
This is just a resolution.
So resolution doesn't have to come again.
No.
Right. You'll be voting on either approving or not approving this tonight. That'll be the final action.
From the consent agenda, and we can do it individually.
Yes.
Just needing to make sure.
Okay. Any questions for the two applicants? Okay. Then council, what you have in front of you is consent agenda items 5F and 5G. I move to approve, I guess, item 5F.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from John Dyak and a second from Debbie on item F. Debbie, all right, let's start on this side. John.
Yes.
Debbie.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Cheryl.
No.
Josh.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes with one no vote. Next item is item 5G.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve item 5G, resolution number 20-056, please.
Second.
We have a motion by Josh and a second by Debbie. John.
Yes.
Debbie.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Josh. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is our town administrators' report.
Mr. Mayor, not that I'm one for the spotlight, but you skipped our updates and reports, sir.
Oh, did I?
Way back there.
Wait, where did I skip that? And I apologize. Oh, my goodness. Yes, I did. All right, let's do reports, items, comments from mayor and council. Let's start with John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess the only, the item that comes to mind at this point, I had a check-in with the cultural department interim director, Carrie, and she talked a little bit about the challenges of COVID, how to, you know, how to potentially get people to come in so we can, we can have performances, and a few other matters. So it was good to check in. That happens every other month, and then we have cultural commission the other odd months.
Odd months.
If you will. So that's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Debbie.
Other than what John said, no, nothing else to report.
Okay, Jeff.
So I attended the Parker Chamber Board of Directors meeting on October 7th, as well as the Downtown Business Alliance on October 14th.
Cheryl.
Yeah, we've had some meetings with community development, and we had a meeting with the Douglas County Housing Partnership. However, I don't really have anything to report from those.
Okay. Josh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thursday, I chaired Cherry Creek Basin Water Quality Authority, and like most places, it is budget time, and it's always fun during budget time, but we'll get that done in November. And then today, I had Communications Department liaison meeting, and I'm very, very excited and very, very proud of what Elise and her staff, specifically Brooke Spain, have done to adapt to the limitations that we're going to see during the holiday time and all the great things that are going to come. So keep your eyes peeled, make sure you watch our websites, and we're going to, we're going to have a lot going on downtown to adapt to the restrictions that we are forced to deal with. So awesome.
Excellent.
Did you happen to talk about any dendritic?
Dendritic.
Any conversation?
Yes, multiple times.
Always dendritic. Only a couple of things I have. I got to go over to the Pace Center to help them record a video for promoting one of the new fundraising programs they have coming up. And just as a reminder for those watching at home, the Parker Arts is open, parkerarts.org. You can pop on there, and there's classes you can take. There are shows coming up, the Parker Corral Holiday Show's coming up. There's Sasquatch Productions has got Little Shop of Horrors. There's also, I think, like a Santa and Mrs. Claus thing going on. So check that out. And then tomorrow, or is it, no, actually, on Wednesday, I get to do a Zoom meeting with the third graders at Pine Grove Elementary School talking about government and their role as citizens. So that's coming up. All right, next up is our town administrators' reports. For those watching at home, instead of us going through the report, go to parkeronline.org, and you can download the town administrators' report. It is chock full of amazing information, right, Michelle? That you've worked diligently to put together to inform everybody. She is shaking her head yes, and you'll just have to trust me on that. All right, next up is our ordinances. We're going to start off with 7A. This is ordinance number 3.321.3 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to amend Section 13.02.010 and subsection 13.07.14C of the Parker Municipal Code concerning dedications for parks, trails, open space, and schools. Mary, you are going to lead the show tonight, correct?
I am. Thank you, Mayor and council.
Outside voice, and you've got it. You've got it.
Outside voice, yes. I will. Thank you. All right, good evening again, mayor and council. As you mentioned, tonight is the public hearing for ordinance 3.321.3 to amend Section 13.02.010 and subsection 13.07.140C of the Municipal Code concerning dedications for parks, trails, open space, and schools. By way of background for this ordinance, as you are aware, the town's currently working on the Land Development Ordinance, LDO, modernization project, and we're updating Chapter 13 of the Municipal Code, including the Parks Dedication Standards section. And in tandem with the LDO project, park standards were analyzed early. Parks and Recreation and Planning staff agreed that the park standards were in need of updating in order to improve the consistency and quality of our parks and new residential subdivisions. So the park acreage dedications were determined to be sufficient. However, options for a better mix of amenities is lacking. Also, new park standards need to align with the 2018 Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Master Plan that Parks and Recreation did, and our Parks, or our Parker 2035 Master Plan. The standards in need of updating were identified through the Parks Dedication Standards Recommendations Report, if you remember that a bit ago. We presented that to you. And that was commissioned last year in 2019 to analyze our current park standards as well as the consistency with the 2018 Parks Master Plan. The report's recommendations have informed the new park standards proposed in this ordinance tonight to improve park quality outcomes, including additional amenities to be provided within these parks. The recommendations report has been an important tool implemented by staff in the interim prior to the LDO modernization project completion. And this has assisted developers with the planning of new residential parks. The ultimate goal here is higher-quality parks with more diverse amenities to serve our residential communities. Planning Commission approved, or recommended approval of the recommendations report November 14th, 2019. And then town council approved a resolution of support for this recommendations report on December 2nd, 2019. So amending subsection 13.07.140C lands for parks, trails, and open space will provide immediate differentiation of standards by park type and also provide clear development standards and expectations versus just guidelines. Proposed amendments to this section include new selection criteria for community-serving parks, which will require a minimum of 10 acres and a preferred size of 10 to 25 acres. Neighborhood-serving parks will require a minimum of one acre and a maximum of 9.99 acres, preferred size being 1 and 1/2 to 5 acres. So this proposed ordinance also provides clarity on required amenities for all parks, such as universal and inclusive play elements, bike racks, repair stations, drinking fountains, et cetera. And that would be in addition to the optional amenities table that's provided in this amendment. The proposed amendments include a new table of options for additional amenities for both the neighborhood and community-serving parks as well as open space. The table's divided into four different general grouping categories, and then provides optional amenities for the developer to choose from during their planning and design stage for residential subdivision parks. And then again, required amenities for all parks are included in this table in addition to the optional amenities for clarity. In addition to the above proposed amendments, a few definitions also need to be revised for clarity purposes. And those are open space, park, park community-serving, and park neighborhood-serving. So in conclusion, this proposed ordinance will benefit the town and developers of residential subdivisions with better predictability of park outcomes resulting in higher-quality park facilities that offer more diverse and inclusive amenities to our Parker residents. With that, staff recommends town council approve ordinance number 3.321.3 to amend Section 13.02.010 and subsection 13.07.140C of the Parker Municipal Code concerning dedications for parks, trails, open space, and schools. And with that, that concludes staff's presentation. We are happy to answer questions. I've got my technical lead, Stacy Nergur, from planning, and Dennis Trapp from Parks and Rec. So we're happy to entertain questions.
Mary, thank you very much for your presentation. Council, do you have any questions for Mary, Stacy, or Dennis? Josh.
Sorry. So if I could, I love it because clarification is good. Could you talk a little bit about the DLC and going to the developers and their need for clarification to maybe move away from shals to, you know, or from mays to shals and their ask and the customer service involved in what we're doing today?
Absolutely. This will provide a lot of clarity with that. So as mentioned, instead of guidelines, there'll be clear expectations in this ordinance.
Thank you.
Cheryl.
Mary, would you just quickly give us an overview of some of the major changes of what's going to be happening? Not the fact that it's more organized and put together better, but what are the differences between then and now?
So we are clarifying the size of the parks, both neighborhood and community-serving. That was definitely needed. And so what is provided in the ordinance is a clear-cut minimum. And so staff, planning, and both, this will help planning and Parks and Rec when they are working with developers to negotiate. So you have to go to the code and work the formula, and you figure out what your, what land is needed to be dedicated, and then this will provide the additional clarity. So not only on the size, but then it will also say, here's what is required of all parks, which wasn't clear before. And then it will provide another table of amenity options. So you, Mr. Developer, can work with staff, pick and choose, but we now will have more amenities. Dennis, I think you, over the years, and Stacy, you have worked a lot of these park negotiations and where they're trying to get away from a park that has the same things, the playground equipment and a bench. And what else did you say? A trash receptacle?
If we're lucky.
Differences that this code now has is you won't see those little tiny parks that are just a remnant piece of property that they couldn't develop as their park space. So this is, if you need a neighborhood park and you're required to dedicate .95 of an acre, you're now going to have to dedicate one acre because that's our minimum neighborhood park size. And then with that neighborhood park, you need to include a shelter. You're going to have trash receptacles. You're going to have dog stations. You're also going to have inclusive play elements. And then you're going to choose some other things. So you're actually getting quality parks that were meant for the neighborhood, not just remnant pieces of property.
Thank you. I do have one more question. I know that open space is under a different section, but is there anything in there that addresses a trade-off for open space versus active or passive parks itself?
I don't think we made any changes to that. I mean, there is, I think there's a little further clarity in the open space column because we did include that in the table just for clarity purposes. We have stated what is compatible, what might be compatible for features that you can do so that people do understand open space, like you say, passive or active. What really does that mean? Here's what it means. It's better defined in this ordinance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Just on Cheryl's point, but bottom line is that we're not changing something to say that you can trade one for the other. You can, you can't trade open space.
Correct.
Because you've got a park. Because you've got a park.
That is correct.
If it's open space, it stays open space.
That's correct. There are requirements, very clear requirements for open space and for your park dedication.
Jeff, did you have a question?
I did not.
John?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay. Well, with that, we're going to go ahead and open it up for public comment at 7:30 PM. There's a three-minute time limit for public comment. If you're one of the attendees on the Zoom meeting, go ahead and use your raise-your-hand feature. And we will bring you over as a panelist for public comment. And at this point, it does not appear that anyone has their hands up. Danette, can you confirm that?
I can confirm.
Okay, then we're going to go ahead and close public comment at 7:30 PM. And I would, oh, wait a minute, right at the last second there. Looks like we've got Michael De, I don't have my glasses on, I'm sorry, guys, DeKovina? All right, so, oh, I'm not going to wear your glasses. I will break those things with my big head. So, Michael, before we get started, the way it's going to work is you're going to get unmuted here. You're going to state your name and address for the record. Once you do that, I'm going to hit start on the timer. I've got a three-minute timer. You probably can't see it. It's above my head. When you get down to 30 seconds left, I will let you know you've got 30 seconds left. And then at three minutes, we're going to go ahead and cut you off and move on to the next one. So with that, Michael, go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please.
Awesome. Thank you, Mayor. Michael DeKovina, 12793 Red Roses Circle. I have a question regarding this ordinance, not so much comment. Will this apply to approved but not yet built developments and parks part of the master plan? Or will this be for anything being built from its passage on?
Okay, thank you very much. All right, is there anybody else for public comment? This will be your last chance, and then we'll answer his question. Okay, I do not see anyone else's hands going up, so we'll close public comment at 7:31 PM. And staff who'd like to address that question?
I think I'm closest to the microphone.
Okay. This is Mary again.
This is Mary. And that, the ordinance, if it passes tonight, this will be everything moving forward from this passage of this ordinance.
Thank you very much. All right, so council, with that, I would entertain further discussion, please, or a motion on item 7A.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 3.321.3 on second reading, please.
Second. We have a motion from Josh and a second from John. Josh?
All right.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is item 7B. This is ordinance number 9.318.1 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to repeal ordinance number 9.318, series of 2020, a bill for an ordinance to approve the intergovernmental agreement regarding the Community Development Block Grant Program for fiscal years 2021 to 2023, administered by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development by and between the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, State of Colorado, and the Town of Parker. John, let's see, or Jamie, are you going to be, you're going to lead us on this one?
I am.
All right, so Jamie, for those at home, if you'd just tell us your name and what you do for the town.
Jamie Nguyen. I'm the Assistant Town Attorney.
Is your mic on?
I believe so.
Yes, all right. Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I know we've had a lot of discussions about CDBG this year. This one, I'm going to try to explain it so it's not too confusing. Back on July 6, Town Council did vote to approve an ordinance to accept the intergovernmental agreement between the Town of Parker, Douglas County, Colorado, as well as Castle Pines and Lone Tree. Since that time, HUD declined to accept that intergovernmental agreement and provided changes that they were requiring us to incorporate. Town Council has declined to incorporate those changes. Therefore, this ordinance, we were requesting the passage of this ordinance, which would repeal the prior ordinance that was passed, so we would no longer be participating in the CDBG program. I'm happy to answer any questions or clarify that if it did not make sense.
All right. Council, do you have any questions for Jamie regarding this? We've heard about it 400,000 times. All right, we're going to go ahead and open it up for public comment at 7:34 PM. If there's anyone wishing to address council on this item, go ahead and use your raise-your-hand feature. All right, Danette, I'm not seeing any movement. Would you confirm?
That is correct.
Okay, we'll close public comment at 7:34, and I would entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I'll move to approve ordinance number 9.318.1.
Second. We have a motion from Cheryl, and we have a second from Jeff. John?
Yes.
Debbie?
No.
Jeff?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one with one no vote from Debbie Lewis. Next item on our agenda is item 7C. This is ordinance number 1.546 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to approve the Douglas County Impact Unit, Impact Collaborative Investigative Unit Memorandum of Understanding among the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, Town of Parker, City of Lone Tree, and Town of Castle Rock. So it tells me, so right off the bat, like Jamie's name is what comes out first here. And then when I look up from expecting Jamie and I see Jim sitting there, it's kind of a shock to the system.
Yeah, we were playing a little musical chairs.
Musical chairs, all right.
You're down your toes.
I grew a beard.
You grew a beard. So Jim, if you could state your name and what you do for the town for those at home.
Sure, I'm Jim Pryor. I'm the Investigations Commander at the Police Department.
Okay, excellent.
And thank you, Mayor and Council. This, uh, this is an update to our current Douglas County Impact MOU that we have. Basically, there's a bunch of, I won't say a bunch, there's some administrative changes that are in it. None of those changes have anything to do with finances, with our participation or our requirements to participate in the unit. Specifically, what, what some of the changes are is they're changing the name of the building that they used to report to, including our detective, was the Highlands Ranch Substation. They went through and changed all of that, so now it's the Highlands Ranch Division. Obviously, it doesn't make a huge difference in that. In section nine, under uniforms, there's, they just added what they issue to all of the detectives, whether it's our detective that's participating or Castle Rock or Lone Tree, which has to do with long-sleeved shirts that say sheriff on it and have to be part of the unit. And the last thing is, and they've always done this, it was just never in the MOU, is a spot where they're doing medical testing for our detectives when they go in to make sure that they don't have anything that would preclude them from participating in it, especially as they go into dangerous environments like meth labs or anything like that that would be super dangerous for them. And then also when they, if they get exposed to something like that, continued medical testing just to make sure they haven't, haven't contracted anything. So that's all paid for out of the Douglas County Impact General Fund that they've got set up. So those are the changes to it.
No addition of beards?
No, no addition of beards, but so far, all of the, I think all of the male detectives that we've had in there have all had beards, so.
So we're good.
So there we are.
All right, good, good. Glad you clarified. All right, council, do you have any questions for Jim?
So is the beard an unwritten rule? Is that?
Unwritten rule.
Is that sort of?
That's a health risk right there.
It's, it's something. It's not, it's a maze, not a shell. Yeah, it is kind of an unwritten rule. When you go to investigations and if you're working patrol, you don't have beards. So when you go back to investigations and you can grow one, it kind of is. You go to Impact, it can get a little.
They get a little longer.
Yeah, they get a little longer. They get to wear t-shirts and jeans most of the time, so.
There you go. All right, cool. Questions? All right, we're going to go ahead and open it up for public comment at 7:38 PM. If there's anyone online wishing to address council on this item, please use your raise-your-hand feature.
There are no public comments.
Okay, we'll go and close public comment at 7:38 PM, and I would entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I'll move to approve ordinance number 1.546 on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion from Cheryl, and we have a second from Josh. Josh?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Yeah, aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Debbie?
Yes.
John? Motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is item 7D. This is ordinance number 9.324 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to approve the intergovernmental agreement by and between the Town of Parker and the Colorado Department of Revenue concerning sales and use tax software. Linda, good seeing you down there.
Am I on?
Try.
You're on.
Okay.
And feel free to use your outside voice. You're good.
I would like to give you a little history on this. So I'll start with June of 2017. The state of Colorado, the legislative branch, created the Sales and Use Tax Information Passcode. The Town of Parker participated in passports, and we will continue to. In June 2018, the United States Supreme Court issued the Wayfair decision, which established economic nexus for sales tax purposes. In May 2019, the Colorado Legislature adopts economic nexus definitions and destination sourcing rules for all jurisdictions collected by the Colorado Department of Revenue. How are they going to do this? They're going to create a new system. The new system is the Sales and Use Tax Information and Document System. They issued an RFP, and they came down to two panelists that will provide a single point of remittance and uniform remittance form, a taxability and exemption matrix, an address database that is accurate. You'll have the ability to calculate tax rates on items with differing tax rates in the same jurisdiction, and the system will keep track of any changes over a history time. Home rule jurisdictions may enter into an agreement for the collection of their sales tax through this portal. The cost of the program is minimal. It will be a banking charge of a dollar per transaction with our bank. So in our case, that could be as much as $260 a year if we had a transaction every single day. If we want the third-party provider, MuniRev, to help us integrate the information with our legacy accounting system, the cost is currently capped at $17,500. The pros to this are it's a single-point collection, and it's, that is going to provide a lot of ease for filing for large taxpayers with multiple locations in Colorado. The other big one is that the state will now have an accurate GIS base and our state database. So that'll be great. The cons are that we estimate there will be an additional one to two hours a day of staff time in the Sales, Tax, and Finance divisions to manage this banking relationship. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Linda. Council questions? Debbie?
Seventeen five, is that $17,500?
Yes, ma'am.
As opposed to the 200 and?
No, no, that's, well, the 17.5 is if we have them come do the integrations for us.
Right, but.
So what? Our legacy accounting system is CASL, and our third-party payer is currently express bill pay. Those systems? Okay. I don't know.
Okay. Our current accounting system is CASL. Our current third-party pay is express bill pay. Those systems are integrated, and basically we have a button to push every day to bring the money into our accounting system. If we're unable to do that with this data that comes from the MuniRev system, we can get MuniRev to work with us to help us have another button-pushing application. I'm hopeful that the number of jurisdictions that currently have CASL accounting will make it feasible for MuniRev to provide that service to us. To add the button? Yeah. But currently, yeah, currently, we don't have that. And if we can't get it, we could have additional costs because we might have to hand data in or this data. One to two hours a day? Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Other questions? Josh?
I wonder if Hillary Graham is here to speak to this on our team?
She, she is. She's on the line.
Could we hear from, maybe she has something to add?
Do you have any other questions, though?
No.
For Linda while we're, got her front, nope. All right, Hillary?
Hi there. I don't have a formal presentation or anything specific to add. I'm here to answer questions, should you have any?
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Hillary? Nope. All right. Well, we're going to go ahead and open it up for public comment at 7:44 PM. If there's anyone here wishing to address council, please use your raise-your-hand feature.
There are no public comments.
Okay, then we'll close public comment at 7:44 PM, and I would entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
Mike, I'd like to make one comment.
Sure.
This ordinance goes along with the next ordinance. And the CML and the Colorado Department of Revenue has asked us not to adopt economic nexus in our jurisdictions unless we become partners in the intergovernmental agreement. So there.
That's why there's two.
That's why there's two, and that's why we have to pass this one if we want to pass the other one.
Gotcha, gotcha. All right. Council, I'd entertain further discussion or a motion, please, on this item.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 9.324 on second reading, please.
Second.
We have a motion from Josh, and we have a second from Debbie. John?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Josh?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item up is item is 7E. This is ordinance number 8.31 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to amend Chapter 4.03 of the Parker Municipal Code to define economic nexus and update methods for collection and remittance of sales tax. Now, Linda, before you give your presentation, I have to say that I've been working in some form or fashion with this since forever, right? And I got to tell you, as a Star Trek fan, every time I hear the word nexus, all I can think of, like, there's a few fans that are laughing about it, right? And I'm waiting for the ribbon of light to come through the sky and put us all into Happyland now that I see the word nexus so much, so.
It's, it's going to happen.
It's going to happen.
We're going to be in Happyland.
All right, go ahead.
So the legislature defined and adopted economic nexus for Colorado and made the destination sourcing rules for all the jurisdictions collected by the Colorado Department of Revenue. In October 2019, they began requiring retailers known as marketplace facilitators to collect and remit Colorado sales tax. These marketplace facilitators are large e-commerce businesses that offer goods from other retailers on their website. And the reason it's more important that we have these larger companies collecting the sales tax, that transaction goes through their website, including the payment portal that we all use, our credit card or PayPal or whatever method. So we felt like it was only fair that that place of business collect and remit the tax on behalf of those other retailers. Also, it would be tough for us to require every e-commerce retailer, no matter how large or small, to, to collect for the Town of Parker. So we would like to adopt the economic nexus and marketplace facilitator definitions for our code. This would establish a different definition for doing business in the town and would include economic nexus. We feel like we can estimate, based on Douglas County's experience with this increase, that they had a 50% increase in revenue from online retailers. In 2019, the Town of Parker collected approximately $790,000 from our voluntary online retailers. And we estimate, based on this, that we would collect an additional $400,000 per year. If we do not adopt these ordinances, there is some possibility that our current voluntary remitters would decide not to be voluntary anymore. And that's because so many jurisdictions are going this way. I'll give you, for instance, 32% of the home rule jurisdictions are reviewing and evaluating the system. 25% have started the process of securing the signatures necessary for the agreement. And 41% have signed the agreement and are onboarding in this system and collecting their sales tax. The cons, this is one additional step where we're allowing the state of Colorado to enter into our business of collecting. where we're allowing the state of Colorado to enter into our business of collecting sales tax. At this time, there is no change to our tax base. But the Simplification Committee will be meeting for the next five years to discuss ways to make Colorado's sales tax easier for our taxpayers.
Okay. Wonderful, Linda. Thank you very much. Counsel, do you have any questions from Linda on nexus?
I just have a comment. Linda and Mary Lou, I just want to say thank you for meeting with me this afternoon and walking me through these steps. And Linda, I thank you especially for being so diligent after all these years of going after the internet sales tax for our town. Bringing $400,000 more to our town is quite a boon, and I appreciate that very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I just have a comment. Thank you for explaining it so those of us who are not financial wizards get it.
After using the word nexus. All righty. Without any other questions, we'll open it up for public comment at 7:51 PM. I see we do have one hand up. Laura Hefta, if you would, we'll go ahead and promote you to a panelist. You know the rules, Laura. If you'll state your name and address for the record, and then I'll hit start, and then you've got a three minute time limit. So go ahead and unmute Laura.
Oh, okay. Good evening, council members and mayor. This is Laura Hefta from 18236 Shadberry Lane, Parker, Colorado, 80134. And I just have a question regarding the different definition of doing business in Parker. The presenter didn't mention that there was a different definition for doing business in Parker for the online retailers, and I was hoping that she could briefly go over what that standard is. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much, Laura. Is there anyone else wishing to address counsel for public comment? Go ahead and raise your hand if there are.
There are no other public comments, mayor.
Okay. We'll close public comment at 7:52 PM. And Linda, could you expand a little bit more on that?
Yes. Currently, we define doing business in the Town of Parker by having a physical presence in the town. That could mean inventory. It could mean equipment. It could mean salespeople. It could mean a lot of different things. What it requires the retailer or vendor to actually have some footprint in the Town of Parker. With the adoption of economic nexus, we are joining with the state of Colorado in saying that those online retailers that take money from our citizens and provide goods to our citizens have some kind of intersection with the town. And because of that economic factor, that part of their sales, that the impact to the town should be the same as a brick and mortar retailer. And so we wanted to tax those e-commerce retailers in the same manner as we tax our brick and mortar retailers.
Okay. Thank you very much. Counsel, with that, you've got item 7E in front of you. I'd entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 8.31 on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion from Debbie, and we have a second from, I didn't hear who it was. Was that Josh or Jeff? That was Jeff. And a second from Jeff.
Mr. Mayor, I would, real quick, just for clarification, though, on that part. This is, this is a Supreme Court decision in the Wayfair Act, and this is precedent set by the Supreme Court that we're adopting, correct?
It is. And let me explain why CML is.
Well, real quick, Counsel, we have a motion on the table. Are you okay holding the motion for the explanation?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead.
CML would like us to try to maintain the Wayfair decision as closely as possible. So one of the factors in the Wayfair decision was that it provides a simplified method for those online retailers to remit this tax. If we adopt the such intergovernmental agreement, we would be providing that single point where they can pay all of the tax that they owe to the state of Colorado. If we don't adopt both of those methods, we would be requiring those retailers to file their sales tax in each of the 78 home rule jurisdictions in addition to the state of Colorado.
Thus, in my opinion, not honoring the Supreme Court's decision.
Correct.
Thank you. That's what I was after. I appreciate that, Linda. Okay?
Mayor, I believe Hillary Graham has something to say.
Hillary?
Yeah, hi there. I wanted to chime in on the Supreme Court decision. The Wayfair decision actually removed an impediment that the Supreme Court had established previously, and that was through prior decisions that required physical connection or nexus between the taxpayer and the vendor. So by Wayfair, that obstacle was removed, and the state of Colorado adopted an economic nexus, which the town is now following suit and tagging along with that.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you very much, Hillary. Counsel, you have a motion from Debbie and a second from Josh. If that motion still stands, we'll call a vote unless, I'm sorry, Jeff. If that motion still stands, and otherwise, I'll call another motion or a call for another motion. Is that you guys still honoring it? Okay. Josh?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Debbie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on your agenda is item 8, a motion. Counsel, this is the opportunity, if anyone has a motion to make of appointing a town council member to fill the vacancy that is left by Renee, this would be the time for that motion.
Mr. Mayor, we don't believe have motion tonight. We do have a few more discussions to have amongst us. This is something that's ongoing, and appreciate the public's patience and your patience, Mr. Mayor, but it's a decision that we're still working on, sir.
Okay. Then we'll go ahead and move to item nine, which is the best item on there tonight, which is adjournment. We'll adjourn at 7:56. Have a good evening, everybody.